Third city council meeting. The first item on the agenda is the invocation by Dale Hexum of Good Shepherd Church and followed by the pledge of allegiance if you care to stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the many blessings you pour out upon us as a community. We thank you for the beauty of nature and the creation you have placed us in. We thank you for the blessing and privilege it is to live in a free and prosperous country. We thank you for our leaders, those you have placed in authority to keep the order and to keep the peace. We pray tonight for our leaders at the federal level. We pray for our leaders at the state level. And we pray for these men and women here who have been put in place to make decisions that would make our city flourish and prosper. We pray tonight that as they discuss and as they debate and as they vote, we pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment. We pray that you would give them empathy and compassion. And we pray that each decision that is made would be for your glory and out of love for our neighbors. We pray your continued blessing to be upon this council and even more so upon this city that they serve. And I ask all this in the name of Jesus, the name above all names. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great courage of the patriots on my nation and our God, in his wisdom, where the liberty and justice are all.
Roll call please.
Here.
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 We have a full house. So first item on the agenda is open forum. Anybody wishing to talk to something that's not on the agenda, please come forward to the lectern, state your name and the city in which you live. Does, oh, Dwayne's gonna go first.
Mayor, Council, Dwayne Cookman, living in Fergus Falls. More asking the question about the dairy land or the old dairy property. Can we see where the path is gonna be? Or do we know where that path is gonna be for the Glacier Edge Trail? Is that public knowledge or is that up on the website someplace?
It is not on the website. I do have preliminary drawings showing where it is.
Okay. And I don't know if you're aware, but I reached out to Dr. James Lehman about if he had dealt with negotiating with the railroads before, and he has. So he's been looking at that. I don't know if that's new to you, but I reached out to a couple here. But he says, and I asked him about, you know, why can't it be a one-to-one? And he goes, he didn't know. I mean, why wouldn't it be? So I hope I didn't step on anybody's toes, but I'm, I was wondering if anybody from the council has brought it up to him before.
I'm meeting him tomorrow and going through a few things. That's on the agenda.
Okay.
But, but I mean, I mean, all my dealings with the railroad, it's been like that, you know, that they basically, they stipulate and you kind of end up kettowing to what they want or at least compromising. I mean, we've got, in my opinion, we've got a pretty decent compromise at this point in time with them.
Can I ask what the compromise is? Because I thought it was you had to give up other crossings just to get that one.
We, one is a one-for-one, but the one on St. Andrews, where they're looking to, for us to refurbish South Union and Sheridan.
Okay.
As opposed to giving up a crossing because we don't have a crossing that wouldn't disrupt traffic, you know, significantly, you know, to give up.
Okay. Because I was under the impression that you had to give up crossings, but now you're gonna refurbish two of them or upgrade two of them?
Upgrade signals and a bed and signal on the other.
That's kind of, I don't know, it's.
It's a compromise.
It's a, it's a better compromise than giving up a crossing.
Correct.
It's all right. All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody from the youth group care to come up and state who you are and like how we can help you this evening?
Mayor, I think there's fifty extra credit points in that.
Oh, really?
My name is Timothy Eklund. I live in Fergus Falls. We're all just here today because we have to do this like required, this required, okay, we get to do, we get to go to this meeting and we get to write a bunch of stuff down about like how the meeting goes and like who makes public comments and like, I don't know, any important stuff on the debates. So if, I don't know, if you want to talk about something interesting, that'd be, that'd be great.
There is no cannabis on the menu tonight.
Well.
But I'm sure there'll be debate about something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. The, with that, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or missions, anything that we want? Then under the consent agenda number seven, item seven is being removed. We'll come back at a later date with, other than that, would somebody care to make a motion to do that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Jim. All those in.
Point K.
Right. Yep. And we will not be going into a closed meeting this evening that was on the agenda. We'll give an update when we get to that point. With that, all those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign, the motion is a Karen. There is no public hearings this evening. There are no bids to award. There are no petitions and communications on the consent agenda. And there are eight, eight remaining items. Motion approving the minutes from the open and closed meeting of October 20th, 2025, city council meetings and the October 29, 2025 committee of the hall meeting. A motion approving licenses. Resolution extending the lease agreement with the Pebble Lake Golf Course to December 31, 2026. A resolution authorizing the participation in the 2026 traffic marking program with Ottertail County. A resolution entering into the highway and trail maintenance agreement with Ottertail County. A resolution authorizing an encroachment agreement with Federated Church. A resolution denying a tobacco license for smoke and cloud. Resolution declaring unit 2073, a 2015 Ford Explorer used by the police department as surplus equipment and to authorize its disposal. With that, I would be looking for somebody to make that resolution, please.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laura. Would somebody care to second it? Thank you, Al. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a $25,000 economic development loan to Shine Therapies for Kids LLC and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign the related loan agreements as recommended by Business Development for Fergus Falls. And with that, probably I will call upon Clara Beck to give us a little background.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I am the Community Development Director, but that also gives me the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of Business Development for Fergus Falls, which is the group that meets to discuss loan opportunities in the city of Fergus Falls using revolving loan funds that the city oversees. They had a recent request from a new business hoping to come to downtown. They have actually, I believe, opened for business at this point. Shine Therapies for Kids is an occupational therapy business started by a local woman, Cara Johnson. She asked for a $25,000 loan from the Economic Development Loan Fund from the revolving loan funds that the city oversees. And in a special session on October 20th, Business Development for Fergus Falls voted to offer her a $25,000 loan at 4% interest for 60 months. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the request. It's before you now for final approval.
Would somebody care to make that resolution and we can discuss?
I'll offer it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Laurel. So we have a resolution by Scott and Laurel. Any questions of Clara? Mike?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Beck, for the information that you had there. For one, I'm, I'm gonna be supporting this tonight. I'm gonna be voting for this. This is a young entrepreneur that wants to go forward and try to work in the community, do something great for kids. So this, this is, the questions I'm gonna have are not about the actual loan for this individual because I'm 100% behind them doing what they're gonna do in the community. My question is a little bit more about the BDFF and the process that goes forward. I want to make sure that I understand the process a little bit, that does this, does the funds that are in there, and I think it's like 250,000, and correct me if I'm wrong, are those, how did those funds come into that? And is that taxpayer funds or is that something else that was put into that kitty?
Yeah, there's, the funds have different provenances. Some of them are state funds, some of them are federal funds. It kind of depends on the pot of money that we're talking about. The economic development funds in particular, I believe, were funds that were given from, I think it's the state that provided those initially. It was many, many years ago. They've all been revolved through since then, so the actual providence of them is maybe questionable.
Government block grant, I think was the original.
Yeah. So federal then?
I think it was federal.
Yep, that's a HUD program.
Yep.
So they would have been from the federal government through a CDBG grant initially and then put into a revolving loan fund with the city of Fergus Falls.
Does the council, has the council ever historically given any guidance to this, that your group to this is how we want to see a loan done, this is what we're looking for? Has there been guidance that that BDFF follows that came from the mayor or the council at all, do we know?
The group has had different makeups over the years. It, it actually was overseen by the EIC in years past, so I guess I'm not sure what the oversight of EIC was like. Maybe Bill can speak a little bit more to the history.
I'll try to speak off the cuff a little bit. Yeah, the EIC, and then, so the EIC organization, and Clara, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's still the same tax ID number, I believe, that was registered and then changed the name to Business Development for Fergus Falls because we had a business development of Fergus Falls and we combined the two of them and changed it to Business Development for Fergus Falls. I seem to remember that there is a document when that was formulated, and Anthony, maybe you remember too, but that laid out the expectations that the council had for that group. So I think we, I bet we can dig that up. I don't have it on me or even remember how it reads, but.
Yeah, do we know, Mrs. Beck, if they followed that this time? Do you know if it's being utilized? Just, I'm trying to get a basis here for the council and the mayor to be able to determine when a loan comes like this in front, you know, is there a financial need, it says? Is there a project viability?
I see what you're asking, yeah. All of our loan programs have different guidelines for how the group is reviewing them. So the Economic Development Loan Fund that this loan in particular is coming from, they follow the guidelines of that loan fund, which are, you know, you're, you're using it for, in a lot of cases, it will be things like changes to a building, making it more accessible, changing things around on the inside to make it more user-friendly for that person. A lot of times it is tied to a building. In this case, it's tied a little bit less to building, more to startup funds. So the business development group looked at the loan fund, saw that it was, you know, for economic development use and decided that this fit in those parameters.
And I appreciate that. Do we know what us as a city, what our real goal is with this type of a loan to an entity like this? Is our goal to be able to give them a low rate and they're, get in there easier without bank financing? Is our goal to be the gap funder, that they went to a bank and they could not get a loan? Is that our goal?
Yeah, great question.
Or is our goal to be where we're gonna generate some revenue from this as that? Because each one of those has a different variable. And when I, when I look at this, I say, it's a 4% interest rate on an unsecured $25,000 loan. That's far better than a bank will do with anyone. And so I'm wondering, is that our role? And I'm trying to figure that out. And us as a council, is that our role?
Yeah, and BDFF is having similar discussions about what they want the role to be in the community. But I think it's fair to look at it from the perspective of our smaller programs versus our larger programs. So we have IRP funds and Minnesota investment funds that have a higher amount that you can borrow, up to $250,000. Those two programs require there to be bank participation. So the city is only stepping in as a gap, a gap financer, and that is laid out in our program rules for those, for those two different funds. With our smaller funds, our economic development and our facade loan program, we don't have those same parameters that they're meeting. So it really does kind of depend on the makeup of BDFF and how they see their role in the community, whether or not they're coming in as a gap financer. A lot of times though, with these smaller funds, what you'll see is that you'll have a new business starting up or, you know, somebody who's maybe moving locations or something like that where they are looking for just, just a loan that they can revolve through fairly quickly that does have a lower interest rate and we do not require for those smaller ones that they have gone and talked to a bank.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, if they had, if they had to jump through that hoop to do that and we were, we were helping them out with it. Because what I'm wondering is, is how did, how did this person know to show up here with the city at a 4% unsecured loan and not through a bank? Is it just word of mouth or?
It's on the website. I mean, all the programs are on the website for people to access, so.
And I get requests all the time from people who are just asking about, you know, what, what does the city do for, for new businesses? So I give that information out pretty freely.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had one, literally I had one the other day that then did not participate. You know, that they came in and talked about a loan and obviously they figured that they could, they could do it, you know, in another manner.
Yeah.
I serve on that board and the questions you just asked are the questions that we all pretty much asked. And so it's a very thorough, it's hard, we're gonna have a work session tomorrow about trying to refine the rules a little bit, but it's, it's hard to make a decision on when there's no collateral. And so that's what we went through and there's two bankers on that, on that board and they, they said that they would open arm, take it, but it was a little higher interest rate. So I made a decision, I said, yeah, I'll vote for it if a bank would go along with it for that small remote. So if you look at the whole financials part of the, of the couple, I guess we'll call it, you'd understand.
Yeah. I'm just, one of the things I want to make sure is if it was taxpayer money that was in that pot, and it's kind of grant money, but it's taxpayer money, with an unsecured loan, just is the city in a position, you know, to, to do that? And I just really wanted the mayor to kind of look at it.
It'd be fair to say most, most times the city is in an unsecured place or with third or fourth.
Yeah, and I can just.
So it's typically, anybody coming to the city, you know, they've generally need that, that gap. You know, obviously, you know, the super eight days in, you know, we're with, I think, third place on that one. So I mean, as you say, we're always, we're always that lender of last resort to a certain extent, but we can facilitate and make something positive happen. And I think that's part of the role is, is that, is facilitating and making something positive happen. You know, it occupies a building downtown, obviously starts a new business. And, you know, we have a, we do have a personal guarantee from the person. And we typically, it's usually there's life insurance tied to it as well. I mean, we did the same for, you know, the mill, you know, that, that had some. And, you know, so I think there's a huge variety that gets lent to a lot of different businesses.
And I appreciate that, Your Honor, because I think, I'm sorry about that, Mrs. Beck, but I appreciate that because I think, like I started off, one of the three, what's our reason? What's, what's our goal? What are, what are we looking at? And I just want to make sure that the council is on board with that, the mayor and administration. I have, I think it's great to give somebody a low interest rate, you know, unsecured is, feels unusual to me just from doing business. But if we have the ability to help them, assist them and grow and do whatever they're gonna do, hey, that's a positive for the community. I just wanted to know where things lie.
Yep, and I do want to just, I can provide you a little bit more information on the amounts that we do have in that fund because that was part of the conversation about, you know, because it is, it is not something that, that BDFF has typically done, an unsecured loan. A lot of times we'll use the building or something else for collateral. And in this case, the bankers on the board said that, you know, an unsecured loan would be something that they would do in their normal day-to-day activities. So the rest of the board felt fairly comfortable with that. But our fund for economic development and facade loans is sitting at just over a million dollars and we don't have any other active requests for that. So they felt fairly confident that lending out $25,000 to a business with a personal guarantee and then also just seeing the business plan that she had put in place, they felt fairly confident in, in offering that in those terms.
And Your Honor, one more thing. What's the pay, we've had like less than 1% of default?
Yeah, we've had a pretty good.
Really good run, so.
Really good run.
Yeah. Just for information for those who might be interested, the location of this business is just north of the River Inn and the old law office, is that correct?
Yep.
Across the street from the old post office.
Yep, and she'll be operating at times that like our normal clinic wouldn't be operating. So after school hours and on weekends, which what she has heard as an occupational therapist in the community is a need for, for families who are looking for those services.
No further questions?
Yep, Your Honor. Again, Mrs. Beck, thank you. I've been involved with economic development my whole life with a gap finance, sitting as a banker with other funds. I am with Mr. Mortensen. I too will support this. I think what I'm looking for is some guidance from the council so that the BDFF has some, if you will, guidance in regards to terms and rates. And this could be worked on together so that we're both on the same page. We're not here to step over that, that decision they made. I know it wasn't on a unanimous vote. That doesn't reflect on this particular loan. It was just, it was a split vote. So I, I ask that we have, you prepare balances and our current agreements and send it to the committees, pardon me, the council members so that we can review it to get us on the same page. Because we don't want to question every time they come and says, well, why is it unsecured? Or why was it a 1% fee? We're paying, let's say we're, we're buying money at four and a half and we're lending it at four, it, it doesn't make sense in my mind either, so.
We're not buying money.
We're not buying money. No money, no, we haven't.
I don't know what our average bond rates are and I understand the money sitting in the bank, but you get the idea. I prefer to have a.
We can't use this money for other things other than this purpose.
Correct.
So.
I understand.
Yep.
Well, let me rephrase that. If it's in a CD at 4%, we're lending at 4% as an example. I'm, I'm trying to find just a little bit more funding to support this program and then decide, are these gonna be used with Dr. Lehman? Are these big jobs or little jobs?
You should remember that this council waived fees on, on a loan recently.
Yep, I understand. So we're all on the same page, yep.
Yeah, so.
I remember that quite clearly. And I think Mr. Mortensen had the right idea there. I just want to get us on the same page, update the documents so that there's no, no continued.
So you're just, you're looking for all of the current active loans and the balances in the accounts or?
No, I'm looking for the policy that the BDFF follows for the various funds.
Sure. That is available on the website currently.
Okay.
So with that, roll call please.
I don't have a computer. I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a presentation of claims in the amount of $1,526,416.90. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody care to second it?
I can second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions on Bill? If not, roll call please.
Yes.
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 We have no old business or unfinished business to discuss. Under new business, I think council member Mortensen wanted to make a statement about veterans.
Hey, I appreciate that, Your Honor. It's a, this is, I want to make a statement, Veterans Day is coming up and I want to make kind of a supportive statement towards veteran suicide in our community. A lot of our veterans are war veterans that are in Fergus Falls. And so what I'm gonna do is on the, and it's not, not connected to the city in any way, but I appreciate the mayor allowing me to speak tonight. We're gonna have our second annual walk for veteran suicide on POW MIA Bridge on Veterans Day. Last year was our, our first time doing it and it was absolutely amazing. We had some council members, Mr. Layton was there, we had the county commissioner, Sean Sullivan, myself, veterans that were there. And what we're doing is we're gonna walk for the 18 minutes for the 18 veterans that commit suicide daily in our nation. And it takes us about six hours to do that as a group. We start at 9:00 AM on the bridge and we go to about 3:30. Last year, some veterans came for, walked for one veteran for 18 minutes, some walked the, the whole day. But I think it's important to note that we have a lot of combat veterans in our community. Many of them have come back from Iraq and Afghanistan and many of them need our help. And so I'm encouraging any family member that, that knows a veteran that has either committed suicide or struggling with that to come down and walk with us. I encourage any of the council or city staff that would like to come down and walk with us. And I'm encouraging any veteran in this community that feels like you're alone or nobody's there or struggling to come down and walk with us because we will walk no matter what the weather is like. And we're gonna walk if it rains, snows, no matter what, we're gonna walk for you on Veterans Day. So I appreciate that. And so I appreciate, Your Honor, for letting me say that today and everybody's welcome that day.
Thank you, Mike.
Your Honor, thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Let's not also forget that the Marines are 250 years old this year.
There you go, there you go.
And we are supplying donuts to the VA hospital this year as well. Thank you.
Right, miscellaneous announcements, November 1st to December 1st, we are operating a pilot project for four-way stops at Lincoln and Court and Lincoln and Mill. The objective of this is to see, you know, whether a four-way stop would actually work downtown. Hopefully from a safety aspect, this will slow traffic down between the blocks. There's a lot of time, you see cars racing to get from one set of lights to the other set of lights. So, you know, plus, you know, if it, if it is an acceptable project, an outcome, then it would also equally save the city some money in terms of maintenance of, of those lights. But, you know, the biggest, the biggest issue is looking at trying to slow traffic down. So looking for obviously feedback from the general public as to how that goes. And then the next item is November the 11th, as council member Mortensen has just said, the city will be closed for observation of Veterans Day. Garbage that is normally picked up on the Tuesday will be collected on Wednesday, the 12th. The 12th will be a committee of the hall meeting. The 17th will be a city council work session with capital improvement project and utility rates starting at 4 o'clock, followed by a council meeting at 5:30. And then on December 3rd, there will be a 6 o'clock, a town hall meeting on, and that's a Wednesday. Then we would been, normally going into a, we posted a closed meeting, we were anticipating a counteroffer on the property located at 2010 West Lincoln, as allowed by Minnesota statute 13D.05. We have not received the, a physical counteroffer. The buyer has requested some more detail on the plot itself, where the utilities meet, meet the property and where egress and access could be located, whether it would be coming off College Way or Field Street. And then wishes to lay out where his building would go on, on the property itself. And then once he's formulated that, he's looking to hopefully get a counteroffer in between now and the 17th so that we can enact that on the 17th of December. With that, we are adjourned.
Leaf pickup is Wednesday.
Oh, right. That's not on my notes. Leaf pickup, even, even though all the leaves have not fallen, they're still hanging in there, there's still some green ones. But leaf pickup will be, and that will be the only leaf pickup? Actually, on, on leaf pickup, the sweepers are out equally trying to pick up leaves that are in the gutters. Technically, you're not meant to blow the leaves from your lawn into the street gutter. And also, it would be helpful if you obviously move your car. We can't say the schedule of when the sweeper is gonna be, but when I walked this morning, you know, it was on a street where, you know, the sweeper missed half of it because of parked cars. parked cars, so if, if people can do that, that would be great. With that, we are adjourned. You're very lucky, it was a short, a short meeting.